Looks like we're up and running. Okay, so good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the County Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, May ninth, 2024. It's 2:00 P. M. Uh, can we call the roll, please?
Yes. Mayor Burke, Councilperson Conwell, Mayor Daly Jones.
Here.
Director Dever.
Here.
Mayor Gallo.
Here.
Director Hahn. Mayor Kurtz. Mayor Orkut.
Here.
Councilperson Simon. Mayor Rice.
Here.
Mayor Wilo.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, approval of the minutes of April eleventh, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So, seconded.
Motion made, seconded. Is there any comments, questions, changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Uh, onto the resolutions, Mary.
Thank you. Uh, resolution twenty-four, zero, five, zero, nine, dash, A. Megan Chaney, AICP Senior Planner, will be presenting on the Sanctuary and Preserve, Phase Four. Okay? Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, thanks, ma'am. This one? Yeah. Before I, I move forward, I want to recognize Jeremy Cray from Polty Homes in the audience. Uh, so, uh, Polty Homes submitted a, uh, final plan application for Phase Four of the Sanctuary and Preserve. Uh, it's a planned residential development subdivision in Olmsted Township. But you see the subject property outlined in red there. It's located on the south side of John Road, towards the northern portion of Olmsted Township. Um, so this subdivision has come before the commission many times. Um, it began in, uh, February 2020, when the Planning Commission approved the, uh, master subdivision plan, which established the phasing and the road, uh, the roadway within the subdivision. Um, the master subdivision, uh, proposed the creation of a hundred and thirty-six sublots for single-family homes, um, to be built in five phases, with, um, Phase One, Three, and Four to be built by Polty, and Phases Two and Five to be built by Valory Homes. Um, also, in, in that same resolution, uh, the preliminary plans for Phases One and Two were approved. Then, on February tenth, uh, 2022, the Planning Commission conditionally approved the final plat for Phase One, which was built by Polty. Um, Phase Two, however, has been stalled at the improvement plan sta- uh, stage since 2020. Um, in, uh, August 2022 and April 2023, uh, the commission granted a, um, a modification to the subdivision regulations, um, which stipulated, section one oh four point nineteen stipulates that a phase subdivision has to be built and, uh, recorded sequentially according to the phasing plan. Since Phase Two had been stalled by Valory, um, uh, since 2020, um, Polty requested a modification to that particular right, regulation, so that they could proceed with their portion of the subdivision, uh, Phases Three and Four. So, at that same meeting, um, the Planning Commission conditionally approved a modified preliminary plan for Phase Four to include an additional, uh, uh, entranceway onto John Road. Uh, so the recording of, um, and the, uh, improvement plans and the recording of Phase Three proceeded with the final plat, uh, being fully reported, um, for Phase Three, uh, just earlier this year. So there you see the different phases with the sublots created. Um, Phase, the, the Polty side of the development is roughly thirty-six acres and includes, uh, the creation of ninety-five sublots between One, Three, and Four. The Valory side is, uh, roughly the same amount of acreage, thirty-one acres, and, um, although no improvements have been done on the Valory side, they have proposed the creation of forty-one sublots. So, the request, um, that Polty is making today, um, is for the approval of the, uh, Phase Four Final Plat. Phase Four includes nine and a half acres of land, a thousand lineal feet of roadway, twenty-one hundred, uh, lineal feet of sidewalk, a thousand lineal feet of, uh, storm sewer, and, um, roughly thirty-one lineal, a hundred thirty- oh feet, lineal feet of storm sewer. Um, it will create ninety, twenty-nine residential sublots, as well as, uh, open spot, open space block J. So, we have found that Polty has submitted all the requisite information for a complete final plat application. Uh, we circulated it to our reviewing entities, and they found no issues, uh, that the final plat is in conformity with the approved preliminary plan. All improvements have been completed, uh, according to the approved improvement plans, and all improvements have been, uh, built, uh, according to county and township specifications. So, the recommendation is a, is a straight approval with no conditions, uh, and we recommend that the, the Phase Four Final Plat be approved by the, the Planning Commission. So, if the, uh, the Planning Commission decides to approve the Phase Four Final Plat, uh, the, the final plat will be circulated among the directors for signature. Once signatures are obtained, um, it will go to County Council for the acceptance of dedicated lands, um, and at that point, the, the developer can then record the final plat and create the lots. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments from many of the members? Seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the final plat for Phase Four of the Sanctuary of Olmsted and the Preserve of Olmsted, PRD subdivision on Olmsted Township. Uh, seconded by Mayor Orkut. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, the next two items are, uh, related to planning grants, so these are two of the five projects that were awarded planning grants. This is resolution number twenty-four, zero, five, zero, nine, dash, B, and Megan will be presenting on this one. Okay. So, we're requesting the authorization, um, to enter into professional planning services agreement with City of Richmond Heights for the North Side Business District Revitalization Plan. Um, City of Richmond Heights, uh, applied for the 2023 Community Planning Grants through our, our, uh, commission and was, uh, one of the, uh, awarded applicants. Um, the plan, um, includes, will include strategies to, um, leverage current assets. They are interested in this, um, north, and it, the, the plan actually extends a little bit farther up. It's, you see, uh, Chardon and the intersection of Richmond Roads right there. It continues a little bit farther to the east on Chardon Road. The city is very interested in, um, understanding how they can recoup losses and, um, identify ways to, uh, reuse property that was, um, is going to be vacated by university hospitals. The plan is also, um, looking at, uh, kind of doing a market analysis on how to attract and retain, uh, and retain new businesses, as well as looking at streetscape improvements and how to create a lively business district along, uh, those roads. Um, specific development scenarios will also be de- developed, developed as part of, uh, this effort. So, some of the recommendations, um, that, uh, will be created will identify, um, gray and green infrastructure, um, priorities that need to be implemented or could be implemented to help, uh, not only, uh, create a, an atmosphere that encourages businesses, um, and is attracted to businesses, but also will help create, um, an atmosphere that's aesthetically pleasing, um, each, ecologically sustainable, and, um, a much more pleasant atmosphere to, to walk in. Um, I, economic tools will also be identified, um, to help attract and retain businesses, um, as well as, uh, zoning, uh, changes and the development of design criteria to help create that walkable streetscape and, uh, and a mix of uses. Also, uh, different partnerships and collaboration, um, between different entities will be identified as part of the, the implementation to help, uh, implement some of the recommendations. So, as always with all of our efforts, we will rely heavily on public input and stakeholder involvement, and some of those stakeholders, uh, include the business community in that area. The city has a D E I committee that will be engaged, um, as well as, uh, uh, the Chamber of Commerce and, and different, uh, departments from the city. Um, the plan, uh, will include seven phases. Now, throughout all these seven phases, uh, community engagement will be a priority. Um, project initiation will include getting to know the area and the city and the project team that we'll be working with. Current conditions, uh, involves baseline data that, um, including census material, as well as, um, kind of a boots-on-the-ground, uh, investigation of the area that'll help inform the recommendations. Um, the business inventory and streetscape analysis, as I said, will be looking at, um, the economic climate of the area and doing, uh, kind of a high-level, uh, market analysis to be able to identify some of the, the market gaps in the area, um, and also looking at how the streetscape can be improved. Um, the vision will result directly from engagement with the community, identifying how the community would like this area to be and to grow. Um, the recommendations and development scenarios will take all the, the previous phases and, um, come up with practical, uh, solutions to, um, help achieve the goals that the city identified in the application. The implementation matrix will identify, as I said, potential partners, um, priority, uh, timeframe, uh, funding sources, uh, that the city can then use to, to implement the recommendations, and then it'll all be wrapped up into a, a final plan. So, um, now we're requesting the approval of the professional planning services, um, with the City of Richmond Heights. The total estimated project cost is one hundred thousand dollars, um, with Richmond Heights contributing five thousand dollars. Uh, the work is estimated to take about a year to be completed, uh, at the end of April 2025.
Thanks, Megan. Any questions or comments from the board here?
So, I, I will tell you, um, so this cuts right up to Willoughby Hills, where I grew up. This has been like an orphaned area, so, I mean, let's face facts, I'm gonna be sixty-six. Um, this, this has been like an orphaned area. It should have been done years and years ago. There's such great potential. It's kind of like the crossroads, you know, coming up from Euclid, coming up, you know, from Richmond Heights, coming up from Willoughby Hills, there's such great potential, but there's never been a real plan. And, uh, I think this is an amazing project, because this really is an orphaned business district. This is something that, you know, hopefully, once you get this plan, it could be dropped into any one of these orphaned areas in the county, because, uh, so many cities have this, so, uh, I'm, I'm highly interested in this. I think this is like a great thing, because, you know, actually knowing it, um, and the idea of, uh, making it more walkable or bikeable is interesting, because you're right up to Lake County, where that just doesn't seem to flow. So, but then at the same time, you could go right down to, to Euclid, shoot right over to the water, to the lake. So, you know, to me, I see such great potential here, and I, no one's ever, ever, uh, done this. The whole time I've grown up, you know, I'm pretty old now, but this is, this is like an amazing, this is really like, cool. And I, and like I said, it should help anybody, because it is a truly orphaned area. Unbelievable.
Thanks, Mayor. Is the epicenter pretty much at Chardon? Is it Chardon in Richmond?
It's Chardon in Richmond, but, uh, and extending really, I think they're very interested in that, that, I think there's a ton of potential at that intersection. It's interesting, as we were looking at this, it's, it's, has a very rural feel to it.
Yes.
It's, um, one of the more canopied places in, in the county, and there are tremendous assets. The county airport is just south of there, um, a, a lot of, um, big office spaces, but also a, a really pleasant area, um.
It's very different. I mean, it's just, I mean, the pictures don't really.
Right.
But then, you know, they lost Borealis, they lost the, the hospital, they, they lost, you know, um, like the, uh, it was almost like a Winking Lizards, the, the Wizards Inn. I mean, they lost so much, plus the dry, I mean, it just, it seems like something would take off, but there was nothing there to support it, and then it just died over and over and over again. It sounds like everything you could, in, how can I say this? It, it, it's almost the way of saying, never do this, like, never do that like this, or this like that. It just, it should be a great study.
I, we're, I mean, well, we haven't met with the city yet, but, um, the, I think that, like I said, the, the city is very interested in those spots along Chardon to the east of that intersection, but I think part of our efforts will also really heavily concentrate on that intersection of the roads, because there are businesses there, there could potentially be some anchor spots, um, if it was built up in the appropriate way.
Right, absolutely. I mean, it's, this is gonna be great.
I agree. I agree. I mean, the county does have an asset over there, obviously, with the county airport, and there is, uh, potential development opportunities there.
Help me out with the geography, because I'm not quite as familiar with it, because they've been looking at redeveloping the former mall site. Um, is, are, is this part of it, or is it completely separate?
This is separate, um, and, I mean, that's a, a something that will come out in the discuss, the initial discussions with the city, um, but right now, they're looking at, um, that intersection of Chardon and Richmond, extending east along Chardon, and then dropping south along Richmond, um, just to, um, a little north of Highland, so really just capturing the, the county airport, um, and a little bit of the property just south of there.
But it's still, it's a good distance from the county airport. I mean, it's not a walkable distance.
Right, right.
It, it is literally right there by Willoughby Hills, and then there's a hill that goes down towards Euclid, and it's, it seemed to take on, and even the Euclid portion is very kind of rural. Yeah, it's very, it's a very, it's almost like, whoo, it was like someone just decided that you're gonna put Weiss Hardware there. And then I came along, and I said, I'm gonna put with the Wheelow Gas Station. There was no, there was no planning.
No coordination.
There was nothing there. I mean, it was like, and then all of a sudden, things started popping up, and then, you know, all of a sudden, it all just died. It just seemed like.
The hospital was the big, the last one that really, they're on both sides of the street, and, you know, losing that.
And Willoughby Hills is, um, starting to, uh, actually, um, I think there's gonna be, uh, arroces and all that up at that plaza, like, there's new businesses coming in, so it's a good time to do it, because by the time that's all built, somebody else might want to come in and anchor down, h- anchor west of that. But it's, just to drive down there, any one of you would be like, okay, I think I just left, you know, the farmer's market, and I'm at a plaza. It, it's kind of crazy.
Yeah, it was surprising looking at, at some of the photos, yeah.
It's, and the photos don't even do the justice on it, and there's this triangle, envision this, there was a triangle of land. So, if you go straight, you're going to Euclid, if you go right, you're going to, um, Willoughby Hills, and then, I don't even know what this was, and someone just plopped Paglios, an Italian restaurant. Like, no, no thought, what, it, it's like something no one's ever, I, I.
Good food?
They used to, they closed, because Mr. Paglio passed away, but, I mean, it was like, just nothing.
I wonder if that's the, there's a restaurant there that's spaced very strangely with its, the back of the, the building towards the busiest part of the intersection.
Yeah, that's Pag, that's the old Paglios, yeah. It was just like.
As to your point, Mayor, the, uh, development at the old Richmond Mall is, I mean, Wilson Mills and, uh, Richmond Road, so it's probably about a mile and two miles up the road.
Yeah.
To the south.
Yeah, apologies, I didn't, I didn't quite get there yet. It's a little bit farther south of the, the city area.
Being, being new to this process, I mean, I understand that the city has to donate or not to contribute information to make this effective and to streamline the process for the county's investment. My question is, it got twelve months, is with the timeline, it says they're gonna process this, correct? And so, it says additional services, professional, professional service would be available if negotiated. What, what, uh, which the history of the experience of doing these plans, and then the city actually taking him the next step, or the next two steps, or five steps?
Implementation of that.
Implementation and, and sustainable implementation, not just, okay, we got this, now we have it, but, do we, as, do we have the capacity, ability to support them in this process, as to push them forward for the next two, three, five, ten years, or?
I mean, I think we've had really good examples of, I think Euclid is a good example of where they've completed their mass, all the recommendations we had in our master plan, and they're ready to do another master plan, and so, we do, I mean, I'll let this planner speak to it more, but, you know, there's implementation and recommendation tables and kind of like low-cost, near-term, long-term, maybe higher cost, and trying to help them find resources to apply for grants or other programs that can help them actually implement it, so.
So, we actually monitor this, keep coaching them moving forward, is that?
Trying to do about, even better job of that, because sometimes we do the plans, and a lot of people keep in touch with us, others don't, yeah. Anybody else want to add to that?
Sure. Yeah, I think, um.
Name, give your name, just later.
Yes, sure. Jim Sonhalter, Planning Manager for County Planning. Good afternoon, everyone. As Mary, um, focuses on implementation, you know, um, one of the most, uh, rewarding direct outputs of our master planning work are new zoning codes, or even new zoning sections. You know, our work will result in a lot of maps and a lot of great things, and one of is the future land use map. Where do you want your community to go? Where do you want it to develop? And how do you want to get there? And the first and, um, most, uh, relatable tool is changing the zoning. So, and that's, that is a process in itself, can take one year, maybe two, depending on the complexity, and, uh, and the extent to which communities want to change, what, how big a steps do they want to take?
And I, and I think too, I think, you know, we in the past did master plans for the whole entire city, and now we're really finding that there are segments or certain areas within the community that they want to focus on, which makes it a little bit easier, that you're really targeted, you know, to a certain section of the city versus kind of a overall general, um, citywide master plan. So, it's more beneficial.
Thank you. Thank you.
Further comments?
Euclid, you know what it's like.
That's my neighboring community.
I know, it's, too, you're, I mean.
Historically, when you make a crossroads, that's where things are supposed to happen, not here.
I'll make a motion to approve the PSA with the City of Richmond Heights provide a revitalization plan for the North Side Business District, values a hundred thousand. Seconded by Mayor Wheelo. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor say aye. All aye. Those opposed, that motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Megan. All right, the next resolution is twenty-four, zero, five, zero, nine, dash, C, another planning grant, um, like a striker, AICP Senior Planner will be presenting on that today.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for having me here. Um, so, yeah, so we're, uh, requesting for approval for resolution, authorizing the County Planning Commission to enter into a professional planning service agreement with the City of North Olmstead for a mall area mixed-use overlay district. So, as we just previously discussed, um, one of the areas in which we help with implementation, not just of our plans, but others, community's plans, is with zoning, uh, zoning updates. So, this is a, an example of, of one-way implementation. So, um, this project was also an awardee of the 2024 Community Group Playing Grant Program, so. So, the city desires a modern mixed-use, uh, zoning district to promote redevelopment of the, uh, Great Northern Mall and the surrounding area. Um, so, the community itself has been very, uh, uh, been very passionate about planning for the community and, and addressing issues there. Um, they've recently, uh, are updating their citywide master plan, they've, uh, completed a Lorraine Road corridor study, um, they also are working on urban design concept for this area around, uh, the, uh, the highlighted area in red, uh, which will factor into this zoning update. Um, so, uh, the county planning will write their overlay text, uh, and help to incorporate into the community zoning code, uh, zoning ordinance, and so, this will help address, again, a lot of the issue, some of the issues, uh, identified in their planning efforts. Um, also, you know, changes in general in, in retail and work from home and, uh, and effects of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and how that's reverberating through malls, it's been, uh, uh, an issue in the region. Um, since this is a zoning, uh, update, or mixed-use zoning overlay update, um, it will follow a little bit different, uh, schedule than, than, than a plan, so we'll work, uh, the first phase will be project initiation, zoning needs identification, so identifying those things that they would like, uh, this overlay to, uh, address, things they'd like to include, uh, and, and then incorporating, um, issues and, and, uh, recommendations from their, their, uh, planning efforts. County planning will work with the project team from the city, uh, to help identify these things and to guide the process, and then, uh, will also be attending at least to, uh, if not necessarily more, uh, meetings with, uh, the, uh, City Planning Commission and/or the City Council to, uh, go through the, update them on the process, also discuss any issues, and, um, and let them input into the, the overlay district itself. Uh, the request for the, uh, the, the request is for the approval of professional planning services, uh, again, with the City of North Olmstead. The total estimated budget is sixty-five thousand, with the City of North Olmstead contributing not to exceed six thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, work is estimated to be completed, uh, no later than January thirty-first, 2025.
Thanks, Mike. Questions, comments from? Just a question on procedure, Wes, if you could, uh, is the mayor allowed to vote on this, or should it be?
I have a feeling that will question.
Yes.
A few years ago, uh, I, I prepared a legal opinion for the board regarding, uh, members who serve in, in dual capacities. Um, I don't, I don't think I have the opinion with me today, but I recommend at the time that mayors abstain from voting or participating or otherwise deliberating in these conversations, because, simply put, Ohio Ethics Law, uh, basically states that you can't use, uh, one position, uh, or, uh, use a position on, on one board, for example, to benefit, uh, your other officer, your other position, or the other community that you serve. Uh, so, in short, I, I came out there that, uh, to the extent these, these issues arise here, that the, the mayor or voting member, uh, refrain and abstain.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor.
I'll just say that I think this is very exciting. I think this is really, uh, a great project, uh, where Jason said it to them, and I'm looking forward to it. So, just very excited, I think it's very positive.
I agree.
I worked with, uh, before taking in office, I worked, um, with Mayor Daly Jones, who at the time was on City Council, and I commend her and her administration for, um, doing something like this, so, good.
Any other further comments, questions? I'll make a motion to approve the requested PSA for North Olmstead to provide a mid-area use overlay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mayor Kurtz. Any other further comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Thank you. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, uh, the next two items do not require board action, but as you know, we do a lot of work in a lot of communities, and we thought, um, it's always good to provide an update to the board, so that you know the work that's being done, um, and that work that may have recently been completed, um, so, thank you. Um, that's okay. Nicole Larratt is going to present an update of the completed plan for the City of Warrensville Heights, the Green Road Park Expansion Plan, so I will turn it over to Nicole.
Hi, Nicole.
Hello. Um, so last year, the City of Warrensville Heights was a two, two thousand twenty-three Community Planning Grant awardee. Um, their proposal was a joint proposal with the, um, Warrensville City, um, School District. Um, the school district is, um, dedicating land in which the John Dewey Middle School stands, um, and it's adjacent to the city's only municipal school district, um, municipal park, um, Green Road Park. The proposal was that the school district demolish John Dewey, dedicate that land to be used as a park. This park is needed in this community as the school system was developing new schools. A lot of their elementary schools had closed, so green spaces and parks that were available went offline. And so, this process allowed the city and the school and the community to kind of get together and have an active role, planning for the space of this future park. Listed are the members of the planning team that helped with this process. Um, this process involved a lot of community involvement, so here's a few pictures from our first public meeting and our, our first public meeting. Here's some pictures from our second public meeting. And our process involved three phases of public engagement. So, we had stakeholder interviews with thirteen stakeholders, which were, um, community members, um, that included neighborhood, um, neighborhood home, homeowners associations, uh, we talked to the project team, there was fifteen members of the project team, which included the mayor and department heads, uh, we had five project team meetings. So, through each of the processes that we went through, we would talk to the project team, make sure that we were on track, go out to the communities, get their feedback, go back to the project team, and just vet through, through the process. So, with the community, we had three community meetings. We had approximately a hundred and thirty-nine meeting attendees with forty-six comments. We had a survey that was open, um, in early spring through, excuse me, late spring through early summer. Had about a hundred and fifty-five total respondents, under ninety-seven written comments. We also, um, worked with the school district. We also worked with the school district and did student engagement. So we have forty-one student worksheets. We attended the Summer Fest, which was a community, community festival to get feedback. And we also went to the neighborhood and ward meeting. So we went to like Ward Five, which was the ward that included the school and the park. We talked to seniors, and then we talked to another ward. Here's just an example of what the student worksheets look like. Their feedback was very helpful. And so next, we used all this information to kind of create our community vision and our system-wide recommendations. So with all that information, we came across with naming that park where the former John Dewey School would stand or stood. So we came up with the Friendly City Park because Warrensville Heights is the friendly city. So the Friendly City Park at the former John Dewey Middle School site will be an inclusive and modern park that will serve the needs of the intergenerational community of Warrensville Heights, and will collectively be a friendly and welcoming park, a health and wellness community park, an environmentally sustainable community park, and a connected community park. So each of those four principles or themes kind of, kind of flesh out what our system-wide recommendations are for Green Road Park and subsequently for the new Friendly City Park. So under each of those categories, we have basic recommendations for Green Road Park. The second half of our recommendations are more park-specific. So once that, so once they started thinking, the community starts thinking about what they want to see at the former, former John Dewey site, these are the recommendations that we put forth. So this is what currently it looks like. As you can see, you'll see Green Road Park to the left and where the John Dewey site is. I'm happy to report that John Dewey has now been demolished, so that building no longer stands. So there's a demolished building next to what they have, which was ball fields next to the school. So the recommendation for Green Road Park was put into like four different categories, where we would have community gathering and entertaining, where the community said they wanted an additional pavilion, so that would be one of the recommendations. Park amenities were, we're recommending that they enhance and update the park amenities for teens, children, and seniors. The next category is adaptive and inclusive, mostly general, generational park areas, where we recommend stationary bikes or activities or equipment that would have, that would encourage activities that promote gentle and, promote gentle strengthening and flexibility, and then increase ADA, increase the ADA accessibility by looking at the paths and trails, just to make sure that everyone of all abilities and ages are able to access the park. So for Friendly City Park itself, we kind of broke this down into three options. The first option being, let me backtrack a little bit. So through our community engagement, we found out that the city want, the community members were looking for three major things that they wanted to see within the park. Those three major things was a water feature, an amphitheater, or to keep existing ball fields. John Dewey site is only eleven acres, so having all three of those options would not be kind of feasible. So what we did was we broke those three options up and showed the residents what each of these three parks could look like so they can continue those conversations. So the first option kind of focuses on that, kind of focuses on that splash pad idea with enhancements of parks that would have ADA-accessible playground equipment, trails, and, and, and family gathering or community gathering. The second option is to kind of repurpose those existing fields and create a multipurpose player, a multipurpose field. The multipurpose field would be used for organized sports because they do have football, cheerleading, baseball, other kinds of activities that residents like. And our third option is for an amphitheater. Each summer, they have a Summer Fest and where they rent out a stage and place it inside the Green Road Park parking lot. So the conversation is to save on cost of renting a stage every summer, thinking about an amphitheater that could be a permanent spot. And that was the Warrensville Heights Green Road Park Expansion Plan.
Thank you, Nicole.
I love seeing the drawings of the, from the kids at school. It's great. You should have Madison Park, too, and it's just really amazing, the creativity and the thoughts that come out in some of those, but yeah, it was a great project. Nicole did a great job leading it. She was on our board at that time, and the city really did step up to help that engagement piece that was really needed to find out what residents wanted, so great work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is transit, excuse me, Transit Oriented Development, TOD zoning study update. Patrick Hewitt and Laura Mendez Ortiz is here to present an update to that. This is an ongoing, so for those who've been with us a little longer, you've seen some of the early work, but I thought it was a really good time to provide an update on the work and where we're headed from here, so.
Thank you. One of the comments from earlier was about implementation, and I was able to sit there and think, we've been doing master plans for about ten years, and some of the implementation in South Euclid with, for suburbs, changed the zoning, and now there are hundreds of new homes that are in the pipeline for construction. There are new bike lanes in Maple Heights, new lighting in Olmsted Falls on a new bridge, and new signage in Broadview Heights. So there's a lot of things that have come out of the master plans in the last ten years. One of the things, as Jim mentioned, was zoning, and we have been working on a zoning update that any community can use, and that's our Transit Oriented Development zoning study. So we presented this a few years ago, when we were just kicking it off, and we returned again with an update. But as, some insight into what we mean by TOD, Transit Oriented Development from the Federal Transit Administration includes a mix of commercial, residential, office, and entertainment centered around or located near a transit station. Dense walkable mixed-use development near transit attracts people and adds to vibrant, connected communities. So when we talk about that, we really are meaning buildings like this. This is a large example of TOD. This is at the corner of West Twenty-Fifth and Lorraine in Ohio City. These are buildings that have a proximity to transit. This is close to both bus and rail stations. It has a mix of uses, higher density, it's close to the street, and it has limited parking, in this case, parking below the building. So we would like to see more of this. It's more sustainable, more walkable. It also provides more to our tax base. So our goal was to improve zoning regulations and governmental policies in order to attract more TOD to key corridors. We found that zoning often can be an impediment to this type of development. We're going through a four-phase process. It started off with a state of TOD in Cuyahoga County, where we wanted to identify what we meant by TOD, quantify it locally, and answer the question why it was important, and then an analysis of zoning to look at whether or not zoning presently allows this type, type of development. Those two stages are done. I'll give a brief update, but where we are right now are best practices and model TOD zoning overlay and TOD financing strategies. You have a draft of the model TOD zoning overlay in your packet. So what did we look at? We looked at twenty-six communities near twenty-two frequent bus and rail corridors. The map here showcases the area of Cuyahoga County that we're looking at. It's about eighteen percent of the total land area of Cuyahoga County, much of it within the city of Cleveland, but also touching a number of suburban communities. We started by asking that question, would you be able to build TOD in these areas? Would you be able to build dense walkable development along bus and transit routes? And Micah Stryker from our office looked at five different development criteria. Could you build something that's mixed-use, where you have retail on the first floor and residential above, something that's close to the street, that's tall, that can cover most of the lot, and has limited parking requirements? The answer is no. Micah looked at four hundred and fifty-five zoning districts. More than half of the area near those transit corridors is zoned for single- or two-family development. Some communities have adopted mixed-use zoning, but just because it's a mix of uses doesn't mean it's particularly walkable. Only five point five percent of land within this area is zoned in a manner that would let you build TOD. We've been working to make some updates on this. Our twenty-twenty-four work plan included seven items. One, a development trends update, which Laura's going to talk about here in a second. The second was a best practices guide for how communities can update their zoning. We've now provided a model TOD zoning overlay. We're also working towards a financing document and understanding what the impact of developing, development in this manner would be. We're working on a project plan and online viewer so we can showcase what's happening. An incentive proposal, including helping communities incentivize this, and we're working towards a development professional summit or survey where we could get feedback from the development community on how this could be helpful. I'm going to hand it over to Laura, who will give an update on recent development.
Thank you. So we've, our first report was in twenty-twenty-two, and we have just finished our twenty-twenty-four report. What this actually looks like is it identifies major projects that added more than one million in building value over a one-year period along twenty-two TOD corridors in Cuyahoga County. So right now, I'm just going to go over some general trends that we've seen. Out total amount within Cuyahoga County between twenty-fourteen to twenty-twenty-three, the county overall has seen almost five point six billion. Out of that, fifty-five percent, over half, has been within side the TOD walksheds. And as Patrick has mentioned, just because something is within a TOD walk shed, it doesn't necessarily mean it's developed or designed with TOD in mind or in the principles that Patrick mentioned. And so this map showcases all the developments that have happened that have added building value between twenty-fourteen to twenty-twenty-three. And teal are those that are within the walksheds, but outside of downtown. The one in green is specifically downtown within the walksheds, and then the pink is outside of those walksheds within Cuyahoga County. And as you can see, there's, a lot of those developments have happened in concentrations around areas, so downtown Cleveland, Ohio City, University Circle, and Sugar and Highlands are some of those concentrations. So when we look at it over time, you can see that's fluctuated specifically within when COVID started, but in twenty-twenty-three, within the walksheds, we saw about four hundred and sixty-five million added building value that has happened, and that is the most that it's been in the past decade, so even before its peak, before COVID times. When we look at it in total within Cuyahoga County, including those outside of the TOD walksheds, which are shown in pink, and within the TOD walksheds, the peak was in two thousand nineteen with about seven hundred and sixty-six million, and then this past year, twenty-twenty-three, it went up to seven hundred and fifty-six. So we are about ten million shy from its peak in twenty-nineteen, so we're seeing major improvement in the last couple of years. We also looked at it by community. So within TOD walksheds, looking by community, whether Cleveland, Inner Ring East, Inner Ring West communities, Outer Ring East communities, and Outer Ring West, a large majority of the investments have occurred within Cleveland, followed by eleven percent in the Inner Ring East communities. As we've mentioned, a lot of the walksheds are within the city of Cleveland, which contribute to that, and some of the communities in the outer, outside of Cleveland don't have as much coverage, so that kind of goes into those numbers. When we look by Cleveland neighborhood, forty-two percent of that's been secured in downtown Cleveland, with twenty-four percent occurring in the east neighborhoods. And so that's a general overview. We do have in the document more detailed information, looking at what are the top projects that have happened within Cleveland, what are some of the top projects that have happened within the suburb, the different suburbs, and so really great information. I'll pass it back to Patrick. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you. As Laura mentioned, just because it's within that walk shed doesn't mean it's TOD. So how do we make all of that investment contribute to a more walkable environment? Well, that's what we've been doing with the best practices and model TOD overlay. There are three resources that are now posted on our website. The first is a best practices for TOD zoning. This is a general overview, but we also now have provided a model TOD zoning overlay, so this is a code that communities can adopt right now if they wanted to, and an annotated code that gives suggestions for how communities could adjust that to fit their particular circumstances. We've been working with a project team that includes GCR TA, also our friends from the City of Shaker Heights, as well as Cleveland Heights, Cleveland, and Fairby Park. The best practices really outlines seven items. To mix uses appropriately, to allow for increased density, to prioritize housing affordability, to get parking right, to provide safe connections, to design for walkability, and to foster vibrant public spaces. This is what the code looks like. You have it in front of you, but I'm, there's a lot in here. It's a zoning code. We read them for fun, but not everybody does. As we go through this, I'm going to give you an example of a gas station. You'll see these on many corridors, many transit corridors. So an existing gas station and how our TOD zoning code might change it. First of all, the TOD zoning code only allows certain TOD supportive uses. Gas station's not one of them, so a gas station wouldn't be allowed here. Right now, minimum lot widths in areas might mean certain buildings are not able to, or excuse me, certain lots aren't able to be built upon. This code eliminates minimum lot area and width. The code also requires density. It requires that at least sixty percent of the lot be covered and allows a community to cover up to a hundred percent of the lot. It moves buildings closer to the street. Buildings can be up to zero feet and have a maximum setback of fifteen feet, so they have to be close to the street. It also requires buildings to have a significant street presence by saying at least sixty percent of the width of the lot has to be covered by buildings. It also requires height. Buildings have to be a minimum of twenty-two stories, but can be up to seventy-five, excuse me, twenty-two stories. Twenty-two feet and up to seventy-five feet. It also improves parking requirements. The code actually eliminates minimum parking standards and establishes maximum parking standards, and it says that parking has to be located to the side or rear, requires that parking be accessed from side streets. It also requires screening so that parking lots aren't being, aren't able to be seen by, from the street as easily. And requires TOD friendly design, for instance, requiring that fifty percent of the first floor be transparent, have windows and doors so that you can see into it. Altogether, that overlay means that you move from a more auto-oriented development and design standard to something that's much more walkable and mixed-use that would be supportive of those people who are walking or jumping to and from transit. Laura did a fantastic job providing options for how communities can enhance this themselves. We understand that this might not be great for everybody. This could be a little bit of a new way of zoning in your community, so we've provided options, including a less robust or even a more robust TOD option, depending on how a community would like to adjust this to fit the needs of that community. This particular chart showcases the way that you could adjust those specific development standards, such as increasing setbacks, allowing greater height, or adding some parking requirements to make your code fit for you. All of these are now available at www-countyplanning.us/ TOD. This is the third phase, which is done. We're moving into financing TOD. We will be presenting this. We wanted to give the board an update. We'll be presenting this to a working group meeting, which is scheduled right now for June fifth here at County Council Chambers. Communities that are in the TOD walk shed will be getting an email and an invite, both the mayors and planning directors, as well as some of our regional partners. So we're really excited about that and about the potential for future phases of this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you both. Yeah, I mean, this is, obviously, you can see the amount of work that's been done, and I will say, you know, Joyce, Shaker Heights, and all the partners that have been involved in this, that annotated version, really, we got some really great feedback from the people who actually use the zoning codes and giving us suggestions on how better to suggest text and other things. But, you know, this is really, again, when we think about, we're doing individual projects for individual communities, but this has really been a county-wide initiative focusing on twenty-six communities, twenty-two corridors, so that we can provide a model code that communities can then adopt rather than having to do it for each community who wants to have TOD. So efficiency is what we're trying to accomplish, and I think this is a really great example of that, so.
Yes, excellent. Excellent, thanks, thanks. Okay, appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, I know we've got a couple other people in a hard stop, so I kept my executive director's report brief on purpose. Just wanted a couple updates. So the last time we met, we did, I did let you know that we had interviewed some fantastic candidates for our principal planner position that had been posted previously, and we did not get the candidates we wanted. I am thrilled to announce that we extended offers to both of them, the two finalists, and they both have accepted, so we are absolutely thrilled. We will be out of room, so we've already worked with works. We need some walls back so that we can fit a couple more people in our seats, but Alexandria Long, she is joining us from MS Consultants, really, really great background, architecture background, graphic skills, has led very large projects across several communities, and so we're really excited to have her join. She will be starting at the end of May. Eric Engel is joining us in early June. He has an extensive background in zoning, and as you heard today, there's a common theme of a lot of updates are needed with zoning in many communities. Eric is most recently coming from the City of Huron as a planning director, so we are very lucky to be getting him as well. He's got experience out of state down in Georgia as well, and so they're going to be And so, they're going to be just really tremendous assets to our team. This is not a position that we've had filled for several years, and I think it's going to be a really good balance to help offset some of the work from, the workload from the managers and help guidance with, you know, more junior planners and senior planners, having some really good peer reviews and strengthening areas where we may not have all the strength or just continued support in those areas that we know we're going to continue to invest in for services. So, hopefully, we won't have to turn down as much work adding a bigger bench. So, very excited about that. We also have our new summer intern that'll be starting May twentieth, Madeline Gardner. I think I mentioned that the last meeting. We also, most of you would have received an email from me about safe streets and roads for all. We had several communities asking us about whether or not they should apply, if the plan that they already have gives them ability to apply for implementation. Patrick has been leading all this effort, and we've been working with the administration upstairs. Really wanted to get feedback from who's applying, what are they applying for? Is there support if we did a countywide safety action plan, which would then allow municipalities in the future to apply for implementation? We got overwhelming support to do so, and so, Patrick is leading the effort. We're working with Mike's team and Public Works and the administration. That application is due May sixteenth next week, so Patrick's not busy at all. But just want to thank everyone who responded, and I know the city of Independence applied in April, and so, I've talked to Jessica. I mean, really, what we wanted to make sure we were doing was know who's applied and applied for what so that we can provide, you know, joint support letters, whatever it may be, so that we're acknowledging that others are going for funding, but this is not to compete with those funds, but really to complement those and coordinate the efforts throughout the county. So, fingers crossed for that. We're estimating anywhere between three hundred thousand and five hundred thousand-ish dollars worth of an application that would then look to have a consultant do the majority of the work, but that county planning commission's work would be along the community engagement line, and that would be our match requirement. So, we will keep you posted on that. Also, small area plan for East Twenty-Second Street. We are working with Public Works and the administration as well and the city of Cleveland. They're looking to determine what we could potentially help them with a plan for that area. Former Juvenile Justice Center, former St. Vincent's Charity facilities, and kind of all the different things that are happening there with ODOT and the inner belt. And so, thinking ahead to what that area could be, that's really been cut off by the highways and a lot of the former uses no longer being a use and reconnecting fabric of that neighborhood. So, we're still working on some scope and figuring out what that looks like, but it's a really great partnership with the city of Cleveland to see how we can help advance that work. Bylaws, policies, and procedures manuals, it became very updated, as we're hiring two new people. It's like, oh, can you send your manual? It's like, wow. So, we've updated several policies in the entire policy and procedures manual. There's a lot of work still to do, and so, we've a lot of time referenced the county's employee handbook, but we know we need to do some updates. So, we're continuing to work on probably, you know, the biggest ones that come up, to work on those first. But that is going to be something we're going to really be focusing on this year is making some big updates to the manual. Bylaws, we are meeting after this with Mayor Wheelo and Wes to go through some things again that come up that maybe are not clear enough in the bylaws or ordinances that were very old that maybe we need to revisit. And so, we'll be talking about that and bringing that back to the board again for discussion and eventual update of those bylaws. We need board approval on that. And then, finally, APA Cleveland and APA Ohio elections. Nicole here has just made the slate for, what is, I'm?
Board of trustees.
Board of trustees. We have, Patrick is education and?
Professional development.
Professional development. Laura?
At-large member.
At-large member. So, we have three of our employees that are on the ballot for the APA elections, and those elections votes are due in July. So, again, can't not brag about our team enough, but really just a really great, you know, it says a lot about what others think of the work that's being done too and a compliment to their, to their work. So, the other piece, if you remember last year, some of you were here. I went to Capitol Hill for a Planner's on the Hill Day. This year, they're doing a virtual event, which is great. And so, I'm going to be participating in that. And then, we have annual reviews coming up, so April thirtieth is the final review period from last year. So, we will be working with the team on annual reviews and three sixty evaluations. And then, just a reminder, we will be meeting again in June. I'm sorry, but we have a few more items. So, Cleveland Heights, one of the last planning grants that will be here for Gateway and Wayfinding Plan, as well as we did some work for them for ADUs, doing a lot of research. Now, they want us to actually take the next step and update their zoning for ADUs. We were, we are working on the, our community's data book, and so, we will have a presentation on that as well as a fiscal update now that we're working to close out first quarter. And if you remember Solid Waste, they will need you to meet again in June and also in August, and they need a quorum for that to move their work through to the EPA. So, that is it in a nutshell, and lots of great stuff going on.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks, everybody. Great work, everybody. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Being none, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. I know we were going to be shy.